Motion for the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Just to note, there is an agenda to the agenda, items, pressures, agenda one, personal consent, agenda one F, one G, two A, F, D, and H. Whoever, please call the role.
Mr. Material, uh, Mr. Comer first.
Hi.
Mr. Ballard.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
And Mr. Voice. Hi. I need a motion for the approval of minutes.
So just.
Any corrections? Whoever, please call the role.
Mr. Ballard.
Hi.
Mr. Material.
Hi.
Mr. Comer first.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
And Mrs. Voice.
Hi. This is Beverly. I have to provide you with the protocol of meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Prince, is everything going now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for joining us virtually and on my person at our meeting today. We ask that you get that national list to present it. Thank you for coming to the next slide. Today's moderators for our meeting in the event that you have any questions or comments that you want to send to the Board of Education, are Mr. Bell Prince, our Director of Technology, as well as Mallory Von Wright, our Communications Director. The agenda for today's meeting, for those of you who are attending virtually, is posted on our Board of Education website. The meeting that we're just, the meeting minutes that were just approved will also be posted upon approval out to our website today. For those of you who are participating virtually, the chat option is available. However, we ask that you use that only if you are having technical difficulties so that you can communicate those to the board. Again, if you have questions or wish to participate in the meeting, please notify our, one of our two moderators. So with that, I think that is it for today. I do not have any public participation requests.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to the superintendent's agenda. Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, we're very excited to have our friends from Ed Elements, Education Elements, and Mrs. Tompkins is here. But our dear friend, Mrs. Wagner, is going to join us virtually and just kick this off for us and explain a little bit about where we're at with the curriculum audit. And then our team here present in front of you will, will take over from there and give you an update on our draft. And Mrs. Wagner, if you can hear me.
Good morning, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, thank you for joining us.
We missed you. Well, thank you, I, I miss you all as well. I would like to first just start off by thanking the board for just the, the support and the kind words and the, the emails that you sent after the passing of my mother. It has been a blessing to be able to take the time with my family, knowing that I have your full support. And so I just want you, each of you to know how much I appreciate you, and I'm just so thankful for your, for your kindness. So, on to better things. I'm very excited to have both Megan and Courtney here from Education Elements. We started this journey with them back in March, along with two other members of the Education Elements team, Christina and Kelly. And it has been a great learning experience for us. As, as you know, board, one of the reasons that we chose Education Elements as our partner is because they work off of a capacity building model. You know, they honor the expertise of the district and they, they coach and teach along the way. And so we have learned a significant amount from this group. We've had high, high levels of involvement from our teachers and administrators. And so it truly has been a true partnership with this company as they've helped us take a, just a fresh look at our curriculum. And, you know, with that whole mindset of continuous improvement. So no matter how good we are today, you know, we can always get better. And so we've got some great information from the teacher teams that have worked on this. Education Elements has done a lot of work to help us correlate the different components of all the data. Many, many, many pieces of data that were, that were collected. And so they're going to share some, just some high level findings with you today and some general recommendations. And then the, the work that comes from there will be Becky and myself and our curriculum team really digging in a little bit more deeply to put together a, you know, a roadmap, if you will, based on this information. But I'm just very excited for them to share the, the information with you. So I will pass it off to Education Elements.
Thank you, Kelly. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for hosting us this morning. We're excited to give you this, this overview of the work that we've been doing with you all for the past, gosh, I guess it's been four or five months now. And I think we've got a cooker that's going to give us.
They're used to you.
Oh, shoot about this one. Oh. Okay, thank you. So this is, this is the overview, kind of the timeline of where we've been and what's coming next. To, to orient us on the timeline, we are now in that middle part, sharing the data. But we started back in April, March, April with, with gathering the data. We have a set of gateway criteria that we were using for, for processing the information. It was a rubric that we used to evaluate. We were looking at things like horizontal alignment, instructional supports. And we went through and reviewed data from K through 12 in the four subjects. We posted focus groups that spanned, we had nine focus groups over the course of about two months. And then started going through and had participation from the teams here in district to review all of the information that we brought in to get us to our findings. Sharing out the information where we are now is going to include these like sort of high level trends, some specific recommendations for action items. And then there's opportunities too, to revisit this once there's more clarity around the work with the portrait of a graduate, which will help also, I guess, give focus to prioritizing the next steps for where you want to go with the information that we're sharing. Operationalizing findings is coming next with those like immediate action steps and then also doing that alignment with the other work around the portrait of a graduate. And then taking action will be the endpoint there on the timeline. On the slide that is next, we wanted to highlight the stakeholder engagement piece. This has been something that, as Kelly mentioned, we have a real foundational belief in the value of building capacity within the districts to do this kind of work. And so that has been essential to the way that we've done the work here and leveraging the expertise in district to be supported and taking a step back and looking at all of this information, like with an eye towards the items in the rubric and making sure that things look consistent and that they kind of flow together. So to that end, we had the numbers here that you'll see. We've got nine focus groups that we mentioned, participation from 92 teachers and leaders. We had surveys available for those who could not participate in focus groups, and we had 42 respondents to that survey. The teachers and instructional leaders that actually engaged in the review, we've had 100 plus that did this work. And you can see we've got a quote from somebody that we're naming the instructional innovator, talking about the impact that looking at this work has had on, on their sort of perception of the, the meaning behind what they're doing, like getting a little clarity on the things that they're doing every day and how it connects to this bigger purpose. What's the, that's definitely the, the ownership of the plan is a part of why we think it's so important to engage stakeholders to the degree that we do. And then also that capacity building so that as things come up in the future, you have a template for how to do this work.
Both Megan and Kelly mentioned the amount of data that we've looked at. And this very quick video will show you how to access the data reports, which are embedded within the final report. And so there are a couple of different ways to see the video. And if you want. Okay, that's okay. If it does or it doesn't, we're already either way. We definitely don't need sound on it, though. And so this is just the PDF of the report. And as we go through it, you will see that there are data findings listed by the grade band, which shows you the alignment and the overall student experience. So for a family member, for a child in your middle school, this is what your experience looks like. Here are the strengths and where are the gaps. Then to go a bit deeper, you'll see reports for prioritize subjects and grades. So anything tested or anything that Becky and Kelly's team really wants to prioritize, things like first grade, which are not tested statewide, blend themselves to the data you're going to see. At third grade, you can see all of a third grade English class or all of a first grader's experience at Sycamore. And then within that, teachers need to be able to know what are the strengths and weaknesses of individual materials. And so the, the final level of data within this report looks at specific materials and how they rated on the rubric as well. And that, as you can imagine, is a lot. We've reviewed more than 200 different individual materials. And so to navigate that, people will click into the report into their specific grade band content area and look for the individual material that they want to see. We know the curriculum doesn't work in a vacuum. So where there are areas where instructional supports may be lower, there might be spaces where other materials in that course supplement that. And for that reason, we want to be able to think about the materials as a whole. So our narrative in, in the report really lends itself to the grade band data. But as Kelly mentioned, we are working with her and with Becky to talk about what are the individual materials and the individual action items for specific subjects. So today, what I'm going to share is very high level findings and some examples of specific trends within there. To the next slide, thank you. As Megan mentioned, we use a rubric to rate materials. We co-created this rubric with the Sycamore team to help get buy-in. And there were six teachers on the strategy group that helped us co-create this. The first indicator we're looking at is the gateway criteria. Our intent here is to see our standards explicitly named in the materials. And specifically, are those materials aligned to the level of rigor at the Ohio State standard? And overall, this was a strength in the resources that folks use. This specific example comes from your fourth grade. And we see that 73% of all of those materials meet most or all of the gateway criterias, especially in math. So in math, 100% of materials explicitly name the standards and align with the Ohio State standard at the level of rigor in the standard. We see the correlation between this strength and your student achievement data. So looking at third grade ELA, fourth grade ELA, fourth grade math, third grade math, more than half of your students are scoring at the advanced level in both of those subjects in this grade band. And this number is, is, is very high. 56% of students are advanced for fourth grade ELA. Only 4% of students are scoring at that level. If you want to know, we're looking at your 18, 19 school year data, and that's because of COVID and the implications that that had on statewide testing. The second big strength of this report and where we moved next was to think about horizontal alignment. So in this, we're looking to see, are the materials building on one another? Do students all have access to more complex materials and extensive work with grade level problems? Again, this gets into the level of rigor for students in the classroom. And yet again, this is a, a very big strength for you all. There's a strength in the horizontal alignment in materials. Most of these responses, this is looking at seventh and eighth grade, were positive 95%. This means that students spend most of their time in class on grade level work and that all students are given expensive opportunities to practice at the levels of their nation. And this again correlates to your student achievement data. We see growth over time, especially looking at seventh grade. So in your seventh grade ELA, as you can see here, the percentage of students who are advanced grew from 27% to 44%, looking at historical data over three years. Similarly, math, it grew from 23% to 40% from that 2016 school year to the 2018 school year. We see this as a great strength. When we talk about representation across cultures, identities, and experiences, this is really getting into, do students see themselves in the materials and can they connect with it? And we see some opportunities. There were, there were areas of strength in this, especially high school ELA and high school social studies, where teachers have had time to adjust the curriculum to their local context. But we do also see areas for growth here specifically in K-2. So teachers reported that 6% of the materials in grades K through 2 were designed to leverage students' cultural and social backgrounds. And in kindergarten, they actually rated 0% of materials were able to do that. This is a little bit harder to correlate to your student achievement because students aren't tested in these youngest grades. But we assume that the impact is that your youngest learners have the fewest opportunities to see themselves in the curriculum. And in both ELA and math, the, you know, we're looking at from 2018, 2019, shows that your white, non-Hispanic, and your Asian Pacific Islander students are significantly outperforming your students of color, specifically your blacks, non-Hispanic students. So one way that districts sometimes address this is by thinking about how they can embed their local community and the real world context into the curriculum that they're teaching, which would also align with the work you're doing with Portrait of a Graduate. Another area to continue digging into is this area of instructional supports. Do the materials that teachers have provide appropriate scaffolding so that all students are able to connect directly to the complexity of the task, but also that they have the support to get there? What we found here is that especially in your lower grades, teachers are supplementing their existing curriculum with lots of materials. So in K through 2, teachers are using more than seven or eight different things in their classroom. And the rationale for them is that they need different instructional supports that are not embedded in their main curriculum. I'm going to give an example here from high school science because I think it correlates very strongly to your data. In science, at the high school level, there were zero strong positive responses to the question, do these materials provide appropriate scaffolding that allow all students to productively struggle and still experience the complexity of the task? And overwhelmingly in science, all of the indicators here were rated a no. When we look at your biology data, which is the main tested course in high school science, in the 2016, 2017 school year, 50% of students scored advanced. And that number dropped pretty significantly in the 2018, 2019 school year to 31%. So this data suggests that at the secondary science level, some additional instructional supports would be useful for teachers. In order to make these data reports really work for you, we're digging deeper into them to provide specific recommendations for the most prioritized courses. But also, we know that teams are going to need to use the reports available to them and their most recent data to find those places where correlation is strongest and dig into how they want to adjust the materials. Our six recommendations for next steps are looking at next steps over the course of all of the materials reviewed and very holistically. So in thinking about really the ongoing process, first and foremost, we need a vision and a plan for how folks want to address the gaps found in curriculum materials. Secondly, knowing that many teachers are using many supplemental materials, we need to identify a way at the district to vet those materials. Some of the supplemental materials teachers are using are stronger than others. I mean, some don't align to the rigor of the standard and should go higher. And finally, teachers really would like to see increased alignment, both horizontally and vertically. And what we mean there is, at the horizontal, most materials were rated strong. But there's work to be done across the different elementary schools to make sure that all students have the same strong educational experience, regardless of which elementary school they attend, and that all teachers know how to access your curriculum map, your curriculum maps, and particular materials, because there are pockets where those things were not seen. For some immediate impact, there's an opportunity to update materials to include more representation around cultures, identities, and experiences, most specifically in K-2, junior high, and math science. There's some learning that needs to be done for teachers around what that means for their specific grade and content and what's appropriate given their subject matter. Our fifth recommendation is to look at those courses where instructional supports were rated the lowest and increase those. We believe that will help increase student achievement, especially for your subpopulations that are performing at lower advanced levels than other student groups and also in those areas where student achievement data has dipped over the past few years. And then finally, really thinking about the portrait of a graduate, there's an opportunity to think about how students' time is used. As we mentioned, we had focus groups with 92 different teachers. Overwhelmingly, something that came up was the amount of time students are taken out of the class for intervention and how that impacts their day. In many cases, taking them out of high interest selected courses or opportunities to really engage deeply that would align with your portrait of a graduate, there's an opportunity there to think about how we can embed students that are instructional practices into your tier one daily instructions so that students are not, are not removed from their courses in order to have that type of intervention. We're happy to take any questions that you have and know that will also be following with the team and more specific findings as well.
I'll start. It's pretty good. Quick question is with specific recommendations, when do you think you're going to be?
The, the thing to note there is that there are a lot. So talking about every single course and every subject, part of our work is to build capacity with the team to think about how they can use their most recent data to do that. We already have materials ready to share with Kelly and Becky for what is going to happen in the most high level classes and in areas where our data shows that we need for growth, specifically English 2, algebra, sixth grade ELA, eighth grade ELA. But we know that that's based on data from the 2018, 2019 school year. Nationally, we've seen a dip, a decline in mathematics scores. And so we would need more recent achievement data to be able to say specifically what happened there. People have the materials, they need to go through the process and to do that in teams or with Becky and Kelly's assistance.
We saw on your track, you advanced in limited percent at the various grades. We know that it's going to be that the accelerated pathways kind of accomplish the career readiness track. And if you've been able to look at how that changes as you move through K through 12?
You do have some data around how the accelerated data has changed over time. There again are areas of strength. So I guess third and fourth grade are very strong. There are a couple of pockets, specifically sixth grade ELA, eighth grade ELA, where we see a dip. And then at the high school level, of course, it's the individual course.
What's this, what's the next step on taking this back to the teachers, getting their buy-in on the findings so that they support it and can help move?
So certainly, that's been a topic of conversation. The report being new, just coming to Kelly and myself and the team within less than a week. So our first job is to really go through the findings of that report and to begin thinking about those priority steps and working with Ed Elements to ensure that what we're saying is supported with the data as well. We've already spoke with Mr. Lewis about having some staff meetings, which will go through initially the curriculum review as a whole and then having some follow-up meetings, wanting to determine those priority areas. So really, where are the first steps of operalization, of operalizing? I must have music on my mind. Really taking this report and putting it into practice in specific grade levels. So absolutely, we know that in order to get the buy-in with staff, that, and this is not a secret report. This is something where teachers have a great deal of input. And we want to make sure that they see the, how that input is manifesting itself, both overview and then as we actually begin moving into action steps.
I think for us, it's very exciting to have the data. And it's, instead of us trying to do the analysis, to have third-party experts that really took a deep dive into it, because as you know, we get too close to it and you try different things. And what we're adjusting or changing isn't really making the intended impact at one. So having some outside experts really look and say, here's where your gaps are. And now we can go and, you know, I feel like our team can start to attack it. You know, I'm so glad that we made some of the adjustments that we made in our district team about responsibilities and, you know, who's handling what. Because when I look at a capacity standpoint, to hearing our team talk about, there's so much data here about individual classes. Becky and Kelly need to be free to be able to lead this process and not burn themselves with other things. So this is going to be an intense process, but I really feel like as part of our strategic planning process, this is going to lead us down a better path. So that we have really operationalized opportunities to find that increased score that we're looking for to raise our achievement higher. And I think that's what we're hearing from our team is there are great opportunities here. We're not far off, but there's things that we have to intentionally do to, to raise those achievements. So it can be found within our experience for every student.
I, I really appreciate that we've done this work. And, you know, thank Education Elements for the partnership that's clearly been, provided with this presentation and the work that you have been doing. I guess my question to Becky is for you and Kelly, is there any thing that you need from us as a board to bring some of the recommendations to life?
Undoubtedly, there will be. And, and there, there will be asked because the scope of the work and the variance of different ways to begin doing the work will be, be broad. And that's really where Kelly and I will need to spend some time really digging deeply to create that long-term roadmap. So I can't say exactly what those asks will be, but we will, we will have tasks.
Yeah, I'd like to, to piggyback on that, Becky. And Brad, thank you for, you know, posing that question to us. But to Becky's point, absolutely, once we are able to get in there and dig a little bit more deeply, we will be coming back for, you know, an, an ask or two from the board. We know capacity is an important component of this plan. And so there's a large scope in terms of the work. So just appreciate the fact that, that you have posed that to us and we will absolutely get back to you on that. Thank you.
I should, you know, last stage, non-going processes. It's established addition of a plan on board. Is the vision part clear or is that?
So the, the vision part is, is, is there. That really, the vision is, is where this report began in the first place. So and, and the vision is, for me, it's manifested within the rubric. So what are those things that we were looking for? Representation, instructional support, horizontal and vertical alignment. So the plan really is that how are we going to achieve that and move that forward in a timely way? There is a lot to do, but by the same token, we can't take an extended period of time to get all of this finished. We need to begin moving on multiple things in multiple ways. So the vision is really being able to articulate, articulate that beyond, within a couple of sentences, right? So we've got our gateway criteria, but how do we take that gateway criteria and share that as a larger message as, as a vision and not just a series of gateway criteria? But then the plan is the vital part. How do we take action on that vision, on those gateway criteria and, and make progress forward?
And I would guess prioritizing our, our items that we need to address and, you know, from greatest to least and start there.
Thank you guys very much for this presentation. It's very helpful to see where we are with this. I know it's been a, a subject that the board has wanted to see for a very long time. Can you talk a little bit more about number two and the supplemental materials? If that, if you guys are seeing that across the K through 12 environment? And what is the process that, I mean, clearly, we don't have a process now. People are just bringing things into the classroom that they seem, that they deem appropriate. What in your experience has been a method to actually control that in other projects that you have in other school districts?
Having a clear, a clear and explicitly stated vision for this is what we look for in supplemental material. And this is how you know whether or not you should bring the materials in. And then oftentimes, districts have kind of an approved list of, these are the things that you might bring in. So those are a couple of steps that the team can take. There's also an opportunity to dig deeper into why people are using the supplemental materials. There's also an opportunity to dig deeper into why people are using the supplemental materials. So specifically looking at the youngest grade bands, K through two and three through five. They're being used a lot in your, your English, language arts classrooms where teachers see a need to continue to develop vocabulary and community awareness. And don't find that embedded in their existing curricular resources. And so that's one of those clear places to start because not everything that's being brought in will support the development of those skills in the way that teachers need. And then I would also suggest to look at high school science where we saw that clear connection to student achievement data and a need to better support all learners in that sector of course.
I have some question on the supplemental, you know, is it able to be, you know, that there's consistent across where they share that information? Even though it's brought in from the outside, you tell that they're, they're sharing it in a way where if the deficient, they think there's a deficiency for a student population that is getting, you know, across the buildings or whatever to those two buildings or populations that might need it.
We've heard in focus groups, the conversation around the need for resources to support those things. I mean, we're in this vocabulary development and those early literacy skills, but in terms of consistency, no, it's not there, which is what led to recommendations. There, there needs to be consistency across the elementary schools and across all of the teachers about how do I make an informed decision about what materials to bring in? Well, we think this report will help them to do that in that they can click on it and, and really visualize the strengths and the opportunities for growth within the materials they're selecting. Ideally, this is something that teachers come back to when they're deciding whether or not to bring them into their classroom if they continue to have that level of the task.
Yeah, I'm just trying to balance that to get at that level right now. It just, it seems like they're very effective, but you know, they are very effective, you know, at what we do at that level. And I just hate to break that part of this work.
That's, that's a great point. They're very effective. And what's the list on teachers in order to have that level of effectiveness? So currently, what we've heard from teachers is that they're doing a lot of work to find additional materials to support what they're doing. Your teachers across all grade levels and all subject areas are committed to doing what's best for students. They were an easy group to work with. But what's the list for teachers in order to have that effective content? Is there a way to streamline that process for them so that they can spend more time really teaching and digging into their craft?
If I was going to say, I'm wondering if the subject leaders in each elementary school are kind of bridging, you know, with each other to say, this is a, you know, sure, we found the help with, you know, third grade science or whatever it is. But you're right, Mr. Evans, that, that elementary schools, you know, chit it out of the park or kids, I mean, they all do every single one of those buildings. Can you talk a little bit more, I don't remember on the slide where you talked about the biology in the high school and the decline in that and, and what you attribute that to?
Again, our, our data is really high level out of glance based on your state standards. So the next step there is to analyze most, the most recent student achievement data you have there. But what we are trying to correlate that to is the finding that teacher pattern in the material. Where they said, these materials don't provide instructional supports and instructional scaffolds. Meaning that not all students have the, the building blocks in the materials to get to the level of rigor that they need to and to really experience the complexity of the standards. And so when we hear teachers say that about their materials and we see that in our rubric. And then we see that there's been a decline in the number of students performing at the advanced level. The correlation to us is that the materials they're using aren't supporting all students in the way that they support them.
I, I have a question for the education. This is a more generic question. We don't do curriculum audits every year or frequency standpoint. There are a number of years in between. The, the concept I'm going to have is about CSAs and so self-assessments or tools that are used in other audit type of, of environments. Do you have self-assessment of tools that we could use, I'll say in between the rigorous audit that we just went through? So that we have some ability to self-assess in between those major audits?
As a, the, the grade member, the short answer is yes. And, and we feel like that's been provided to your team. So because so many teachers were involved in this audit, they now know how to go through this process. Or at least some person in their grade and subject area does. You also have access to the rubrics that were used. And so we would recommend that whenever you'd like to do self-assessment, teachers use those materials and they use the capacity already built within their teams. And it, it doesn't even need to be another mini audit, if you will. It can be whenever a teacher is making a decision about whether or not to bring a material into the class. They have access to this rubric to take a minute and step back and say, will this meet the needs of our students? And does it align to our vision for high-quality instructional materials?
And, and what frequency would you recommend doing a self-assessment?
I, I think, I think it makes sense to schedule it, and I would say annually. Like to me, the, the sort of, the logical place to insert it would be, you know, at that break where you can have a reflection on the year that happened. And, you know, the year we know goes, it starts and then, and then you're just racing through. When you have that opportunity for reflection during the summer break, being able to look back at the things that you brought in. Were you all using the criteria? Like, once you've got that criteria for supplemental materials established, were you using that? Do these things feel like they still fit? Did they do what they needed to do? And doing a, a sort of a review of what's come in since the last time you did the audit, the self-assessment piece of the audit. It, I think it also just, it's going to keep those standards for supplemental materials sort of top of mind for teachers as they're pulling things in. Because without having a standard, you see something that looks interesting, it seems like it would work and you bring it in because you don't have, you don't have the appropriate filters to know whether or not it's working. So I think having a cadence of reflection for that is going to help reinforce that.
Thank you. Very helpful.
And do you find, just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Poplar said, did you find that most of the supplemental materials were, like, in what format are we talking about? Are we talking about, you know, programs that kids are using on their computers or are copied? Like, what is it that they're actually bringing? Can you give us like a sampling of some of the things that they are using?
We do have the, the full list of everything in inventory, but many, to your point, many digital materials that teachers are, are using, which may also be symptomatic of the last year and a half they've had.
One of the things we've found with several of the districts that we've worked with is when, when schools shut down because of COVID. That was an opportunity for a lot of tech companies to, you know, reach out to teachers directly and say like, here, you know, take this and you need this and your students will use this. And so there are teachers who started using things during that period of time that then had become part of what they're using, but never went through any sort of review process at the district level. It was just a, you know, it was an immediate, I'm trying to think of the right metaphor, you know, they had, it was, they were stomping on fires at that point. But then it became something that became part of how their class was working. So there is, there, there are quite a few districts that I'm aware of who are doing this sort of step back now and saying like, how do we get all of these things going into each of these classrooms? And that is, it's sort of that, as Courtney said, symptomatic of what happened very well.
I mean, it sounds like there's a really, there's like a balance there, right? But you want, you want teachers to bring in things that, you know, are going to excite their students about whatever they're teaching them. But then there's also that balance. Is it really aligning with the standards? Is it really getting our students to where they need to be?
Yeah. And I think giving teachers the tools to, to make that evaluation on their own is, is a support for teachers. Because they don't, they don't want to waste time in the classroom on things that aren't going to be driving their students where they need to go.
And do you see in, in your experience that there's oversight of that? Like if teachers are using sort of the self-assessment tool that we talked about, but is there someone who's kind of looking at it all of, you know, overall? Because I would imagine, I know, I know like with something that's, you know, a, a program or something on your computer, that, that's a whole nother kind of realm of information that we need to coordinate with our IT department because that could be potentially very harmful to our network and other things like that. Should be approached and student data privacy. There's lots of things like that. But is there sort of, in your experience, is there somebody, is there somebody like in the curriculum department in the school research who's reviewing those kind of self-assessments that the teachers might be making?
I think it's less a single person in the district. The, so one, the, the questions about student data privacy and access to the district network. Those are things that, that have to be like non-negotiables in whatever resource you're providing to teachers as they're making these decisions. And then, once you get past those sort of, you know, safety and data safety concerns, getting to the calibration of, did this meet the standard or not? I think is often done best in something like, you know, a departmental PLC where you can get like the, 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 the experts on the subject and the experts on their grade level, looking at it all together and doing some sort of norming in that group to say like, okay, well, you know, this resource, I rated it this way. How did you rate it? And, and have some discussion so that they are developing a common understanding of, of what it looks like to meet that criteria.
Thanks.
That was my, my question. I appreciate you bringing it up, Alyssa, because student data privacy piece I don't see on your ready. And I hope this embedded, it sounds like it is. We've got teachers who use whatever app they want, but technically they need to really have it first embedded and see if it actually is adhering to a student data privacy.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, we know that last year was like, you know, everybody was working to just, you know, keep students engaged, to keep the learning going. You know, in addition to all of the social issues and health issues, I mean, we know that that was, it was definitely a challenging year. But now we sort of have to take a step back and look and see.
Really appreciate both of you being here and walking us through this journey and continuing on this journey with us. So thank you to you and your organization for all the support and we look forward to working with you and going forward in the future.
Thank you very much for having us. And this has been a really, it's been inspiring project to be a part of. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Child nutrition. So, you know, just to set the stage for you, obviously, Mrs. Warren is going to take a fantastic job of giving you updated information about her department. Yeah, just a quick reminder, we've just through a very difficult, challenging time with child nutrition over the last, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months. You know, Mrs. Warren has become the, you know, she had the drive-through lane. She was in breakfast for a while where, you know, in the midst of the height of the pandemic, she was, you know, working hard with her team to provide deals to our families that were in need. And beyond that, it's been a challenge to continue to provide the high level of service and opportunities for all of our students as they, you know, have engaged in not only coming back to school, dealing with, you know, pandemic and social distancing, but also construction has been very difficult as well. So, so just keep that in mind as you see the data and you know, as Mrs. Warren always does, she keeps a very high level to give you good information about her department. So, Mrs. Warren, thank you again and look forward to your meeting.
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me. So all the data that is in my presentation is from last school year. I might talk about a couple of things that are going on this year, but overall it's kind of all about last year. So this is our two thousand twenty, twenty-one financial summary. So you can see our cash balance from July twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And then our total fiscal year loss was three hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars. And that's kind of like on paper. I did want to point out that there were a couple of things that didn't make it into the, the budget that year due to when they came in. So like our main reimbursement didn't come in until July and it was almost two hundred thousand dollars. So that makes obviously a big difference from last school year. And then also we had the activity guarantee paid. So we had put in the contract that would have to make ten thousand dollars in order to provide services for them. And if we lost money, they also had to pay for the losses. So that didn't come in until, um, like August. So that was there too. So it looks a little better than it did on paper, around a hundred twenty-two thousand still, obviously. I hate to see that. But it kind of is what it is with the last two years. I did kind of put some bullet points on why did we lose money? I know we did the year before too, obviously, since we missed two and a half months of revenue coming in, in the nineteen, twenty school year. Last year, we had a lack of meal sales and a lack of all the cart sales due to virtual learning. So we didn't have access to all of our students. With us having such a low free reduced number, we really rely on those all cart sales. And then just our numbers were, were down due to not having access to all the students. The junior high and high school took a really big hit due to the free meals last year. So with free meals, we get reimbursed at the free rate. Where in past school years, we would have like a full pay rate, a reduced rate, and then a free rate. So we keep track of those meal sales when we get reimbursed at the different rates. Well, the junior high and high school, we have higher prices that come in for the meals. So our three fifty and four dollars kind of are tier pricing. Those are our most popular meals. So we would bring that in and then like thirty-something cents and reimbursement on top of that. While last year we were only getting, it was like three fifty-eight or something like that. So we were close to a dollar less per meal that we were bringing in revenue-wise. So, and those, those buildings make us kind of the most money. So that had a lot to do with it. And then also food and paper costs had increased significantly. We were having to use a lot more paper as well. So with health department regulations, we had to kind of cut everything out. We couldn't do a lot of the self-serving that we used to do. So that made a big difference as well. And finally, just kind of looking at increased labor costs. So there was quite a few buildings that had extended lunchtimes. So the lunchtime almost took up all of our staff's time that they were working. So they would have to work extra at the beginning of the end. And then we have a lot of quarantine staff. So that adds up too. And then I was kind of just pull free reduced data for you guys. It was down at all buildings. And that was due to the free meals. So there wasn't as much of, like, the parents didn't feel like they had to fill it out. We were still encouraging them to, because there's benefits to them for it. Obviously fees, extracurricular, stuff like that. And then last year, they also implemented pandemic EBT. That was especially helpful for virtual students. So, but overall it was down to kind of see almost three percent. And then breakfast data. So this is our average number of daily breakfast was six fifty-eight and our average participation was twelve percent. You can see those were actually up. And the reason that our breakfasts were up was from our virtual meals. So we were spending five breakfasts and five lunches home with the families that came to pick up virtual meals when normally those kids probably would just get lunch. So it kind of skewed our breakfast data a little bit and it was up overall. And then this is just kind of looking at each school, their average breakfast numbers, average participation, and then the free or reduced percentage. So like I said, they were up. Some of the schools, it was only about one or two meals. Some of them it was higher. It all depended on where they were picking up the virtual meals. So we had them do it at like the oldest child's building. The numbers are also skewed too with virtual meals because last year, when all meals were free, they were pushing us to have an open site. So what that meant was if they came to pick up virtual meals and they had kids at home that were younger, that weren't, similar students, they could actually pick up meals for those siblings. So it kind of skews our data quite a bit. Because this isn't even all similar students that were able to eat with us last year. And so lunch was down quite significantly, which is where a lot of the, the losses come into play. So you can look at the average number of daily lunches. It was one thousand eight hundred thirty-five, which was down three hundred. So you can look at the average number of daily lunches. It was 1,835, which was down 390 on average per day. So if you think about that over how many days the kids are here, that's a big difference. And it was down about three percent from average daily participation. And then I pulled together the same data, kind of like I did for breakfast, but for lunch. The only thing is I added the face-to-face percentage at the bottom, just so you can kind of see. And this was second semester data for face-to-face. That's all I could find this year from last year. All schools were down except for Mapledale and Nativity. So Mapledale had the highest face-to-face percentage. And so the meals were free and they were doing quite a bit of virtual meals compared to other buildings. So that really helped them. But everyone else was down pretty significantly. High school, junior high, and Green probably took the biggest hit though. Then every year, I just have to report to you guys whether or not we are in compliance with the following Ohio Revised Code. And that has to do with the nutritional standards for food and beverages sold outside of school meals. So what this is looking at is it'll wean compliance from the night, the night before to thirty minutes after school. That's the timeframe we're looking at. And is everything sold on the whole campus of every district or every building? Smart snack compliant or within our nutritional standards that we have to follow? And we were, so that's always good. So really, we're just kind of looking at vending machines or someone selling something like, students will start around, it happened very often. So I do kind of go through the buildings and look to make sure that they're turned off, because there are some vending machines that turn on like thirty minutes after school. I might have some products that don't meet the nutritional standards. And that was just my explanation. And so I don't really have a lot to update on wellness. The last couple of years have obviously been crazy. So a lot of the, a lot of my time and energy was spent just finding how to feed students. So we had been working on this Sycamore Wellness Fest. That was obviously postponed due to everything going on and not being able to have events at buildings. We will be working on hopefully trying to start cleaning the end of this year for next year and kind of bring that back. Also, every three years, we have to look at the wellness policy and kind of put it through a program and then see what updates it might need. So we did a lot of the like work at the end of last year. We were given like an extra year to before it had to be done. So we'll be finalizing that this year and then kind of sending that out to everyone. And then finally, just some random child nutrition updates. So last year, we had free meals for everyone. We do as well this year. Having all the students back this year has made a huge difference. Our meal numbers at every building are crazy. We can barely keep up. We can barely find food. Obviously, last year we did virtual meals. I kind of already talked about that in detail. I was just going to say, I'm still a part of the School Nutrition Association of Ohio. That's been helpful to have people to bounce ideas off of through all this crazy times. I'm still on the board as the membership chair. And then I'm the local chapter president in the chapter of kitchen construction. So I've had a lot of fun since this year. That was a very interesting process, but we're kind of almost where we've worked out all the kinks. Working, going to meetings for Green and high school right now. And then also I'm working on like kitchen design. So one of the things is you don't really like, the rest of the building gets like nice signage and weight finding and stuff, but not the kitchen. So I've been working with an outside company to kind of bring that in. So when, when they do open, it's very appealing for the students. So this summer will be interesting with two, two new kitchens coming at the same time. Sims was just enough by itself. So next year's startup will be interesting, but I'm really excited for what the kids are going to be able to experience. Especially at the high school, I'm really, really excited about that project. And then just pointing out that we ended the nativity school contract at the end of last year. It just wasn't really worth all the time and energy for the money that we were bringing in. So we did end that. I'm constantly monitoring overall profitability. Like I said, our numbers are up this year. And I think that's going to make a big difference. They also raised the reimbursement rate by like seventy cents at lunch and fifty cents at breakfast or something like that. So that's, I think, going to make a huge difference in kind of our profit and loss at the end of this year. Like for example, at the high school, we're almost to like eight hundred students that we're serving a day. We've never served that many ever. Mapledale were over four hundred kids, which is crazy. So things are looking up. So last year, we were dealing with some food shortages, higher price food, packaging costs. So packaging everything for virtual meals. And like I said, like fruits and vegetables and stuff like that, everything has to be packaged that the kids are going to grab themselves. This year, food and supply shortages are ten times worse. I'm sure you've seen supply chain issues in the news and things. And schools are being hit really, really hard. So we're just kind of working on the best way to find products and how, how, how we're going to do it. We can't find trays. So I guess that is a huge issue right now, like five compartment trays. So we're finding different ways to serve the students and working to adapt. And then finally, I'm just preparing all my staff for my maternity leave, which will be in December. So here before we know it. So that's been a lot that I've been dealing with this year. So. But that's all I have. Anyone have any questions?
Are the, are the free meals continued for the whole school year?
And they haven't, I don't know when they'll come out with what's going to happen next year. I mean, they tend to wait till last minute, it seems like, for both the past two years, announcing that we were going to have free meals. They waited pretty long. I know they're pushing to make it happen forever. I don't know if that will happen. So let's see.
Mrs. Warren, I want to thank you so much for all of your efforts. I don't, I'm trying to think of the last time we had an audience with you. I, I can't remember, but I remember seeing things that, you know, just getting meals to our families who really need them and our students. And your efforts, you and your staff did not go unnoticed. So I just want to wrap it up. Thank you for that. One of the things that you mentioned in your presentation was working with an outfit company to do signage for it.
Yeah, just so with the kitchens, that's not like included. So I worked with a designer for the, for the kitchen. So I kind of worked with them to set up like new equipment and the layout and stuff. But they don't do anything with like graphics on the walls. So I just didn't want to open the kitchens just with plain paint on the walls or whatever. So normally, it's something you might do like after the fact, like a director might work with someone after the kitchen's completely done and get it, get it done. But I've actually been working like with the SHP Architects as well, or whatever their titles are, I can't share. So they've been helpful too. So we're kind of partnering with them, but I'm going through this other company that's actually creating the graphics on the walls or like hang above the serving lines so the kids know to kind of help them get through as well.
So just out of curiosity, was that part of the bond issue or not?
So, well, every, every piece that we work on is, you know, okay, what can we afford versus what we cannot afford in this, you know, discussions. There was not, there were graphics designed, but not necessarily included in the bond issue package. So to Mrs. Warren's point, the stigma around school lunch is our, you know, like you hear it all the time, school lunch is disgusting, or school lunch is this. What we found is that kids that now have eaten because it's free and have gone through the line and realized, hey, this is pretty good. So I can tell you, the oldest, newest boy eats every single day and spends plenty of money à la carte on my behalf for the child nutrition department. But the signage and really making the spaces look different than the traditional school line was important to Mrs. Warren and her staff. So, you know, we sought out from the beginning, probably two years ago, to really design spaces that, you know, have that feel of what the kids are used to. Like when we get the high school done and they see the, I think it's called the Hayes Express Cafe or something like that, that's kind of separate from the lunch line. They don't have a different look and feel for the students versus the traditional line. So, yeah.
It, it's more food court-like rather than institution.
I'm questioning what you guys are doing. I just want to know where the money's coming from. I, I like all these great ideas and ideas, but where does the money come from actually?
So, Ms. Wise, one thing to kind of the bigger picture when it comes to interior design and signage, a lot of those are alternates. And so what we said is that here are our spaces, here's what's included, here are the things we'd like to do. And so those go back to those contingencies. So as we get further along in the process, the better understand what can we invest in. So for instance, for Green right now, we just approved a kind of an interior design package of each of the vestibules for kind of metal signage that includes what hallway, like a purple hallway or an orange group or whatever team or whatever that may be. So most of will come out of bond. What Mrs. Warren is talking about will most likely come out of the biz ops general operating budget to help her support those needs. So, but again, we've got that contingency and there's alternates that we want to monitor and look at to make sure that that entire signage package can be reviewed at one point. Does that help?
Sort of. But you're already prioritizing this over any other contingencies because you're spending money, right?
Yeah. So when it came to Sims, that came out of Miss Warren's actual, that came out of your budget, didn't it? The biz ops budget that wasn't out of bond?
I'm not sure if it's really a question.
Yeah, I believe.
It's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a question back to you.
The green stuff, yes, we're going to be taking out of the bond. Because we're in that process right now doing that.
Do you anticipate a increase next year at the high school and at Green based on redesigned space, different living lines?
I mean, that, that's normally what, what, what will happen with our numbers being so up this year. I don't know what that will look like. It'll depend if our meals still free. I think we'll, if they go back to not all being free, I think we'll keep more of those students with the new redesigned spaces, 100% yes.
I mean, I don't think you can negate the impact of having the flow that makes it possible. I mean, I know my kids just watching them go through the system, part of it is how long it takes them to get through the line. If it takes them too long, they're going to pack because they want to have some time with their friends and just be able to kind of deep the front end of it. So you can't just count on how much having a good, good flow of all of those facilities truly does impact the participation and profitability of this operation. So. I, I do just want to add, you know, that this slide prior to this where Mrs. Warren really reviewed all of the things that she has going on, that's a, that's a pretty aggressive list in spite of the pandemic. And I just really want to thank her and acknowledge all that you've done, you know, just keeps her head down, keeps working through every problem and makes us look really good with our community and the support that she's provided to a lot of families in the last year and a half. I just want to thank you.
One last question. Do you see an additional staffing based on new space?
I think at the high school, yes, we will. Just with all the different areas. And then we have a separate cafe area that's kind of like outside of the main serving area. And I've kind of already hired one person. It's like probably going to take one of those places and I might have to hire one more person for next school year, possibly one at Green. So. But it all depends on if, if, if profitability wise, we can do it. So I kind of always look at that first. So I don't think it would be something that we would do right away. We would kind of start the school year, see what our numbers are going to be like. And then adjust from there.
And then also, you know, Mrs. Warren also had kind of an assistant director until what, a year and a half ago? And when she resigned because of all of the issues we were looking at with profitability, she did not re-close that position. I think that is something we need to continue to look at, to look at just to continue monitoring that program, continue to update, making sure that we really have good support for our supervisors in each ability who have also been a very large part of this success. We'll look at this patch too and we'll work together. So that's another area that we'll continue to look at. Potential, you know, being able to cover that cost because it's been a goal of this, part of the operation, insurance, self-sustaining. We had, you know, I think that you've never ever imagined the path, but once it's, if we're back on the path that we went before, I think that would be something that we should consider as well.
So before we leave the topic, Mr. Level, I need to get some information about how much we're actually spending.
Sure.
See on this? I want that, I want kind of the listing of what we've spent so far and what's in contingency. So that we all on the board have a better understanding.
I can get that for you. Absolutely.
Mrs. Wise, I do have a comment and a question. First of all, I just want to echo the appreciation of Mrs. Warren for the work and the presentation. I really appreciate it. The personal story is I have a coworker, I know we're not working with Nativity before, but has four children from Nativity. And she went out of her way to reach out to me and say how very much her children loved the meals they got from Sycamore and how sad they are that they no longer have those. And so I think that's just another compliment to you and the team. It's noticed, not only in our community, but you know, to all those that you have served. So I mean, just wanted to share that with you because it was a, it, I think it highlights the quality of the service that you are providing and very much appreciate that. My question is really on the, you know, the last year was run at a loss for, no questions on that. But do we have any indication on September and October? Are we running profitably or at a loss for the first two months?
So we haven't done October yet, obviously, just that it takes a while to kind of pull that data together. But September looks really good, but our numbers and the amount of reimbursement that we are pulling in. So as I said, things are definitely looking in the right direction.
Okay. And then my final comment is I just want to wish you all the very best for your maternity leave.
Thank you.
Is it, do we know if it's a boy or a girl?
No, it's a girl.
But we do, just, you know, to close up, we do have a plan to cover this for all she got. You know, one of the things that she does so well is she supports a lot of the local universities with dietetic interns. And that's actually how we filled the role previously as the assistant director was. It's a dietetic intern that was really sharp and, you know, she was here for a while. And then, you know, I think her, what she did was reach back out to a previous dietetic intern. And so he would be coming in, filling some. And then Mr. Foster is going to assist with some of the overall administrative functions. Because prior to coming here, he served in kind of a little role. He supervised child nutrition in a, in a previous district. So, you know, again, having those abilities in your team to utilize some strengths. Certainly, Mrs. Warren will still be making major decisions. If there were major decisions to be made, we would contact her before we begin. Day-to-day operations will be handled once she drops. Life facility update. So, Mr. Level, Mrs. Weber and Mr. Panigan and many others, Mr. Harden, we've been meeting on a regular basis to really try to hone this in and, and address some of the concerns that you had. So certainly go through some updates of really just to address some of the things that came up at the last meeting and kind of tell you about the critical points that are facing us and, you know, just to have an open dialogue about the athletic. So, Mr. Panigan or Mr. Level, do you want to?
Do you want to hop over there so?
Sure.
They can see you. Yeah, Mr. Lewis did a great job of just kind of setting the stage. They can see you. Yeah, Mr. Lewis did a great job of just kind of setting the stage, um, for this morning. Obviously, we wanted to get back to and answer the questions that you had, some of the comments and concerns around the athletics. So we've been meeting, uh, Mr. Janigan, we thought would be the best person to maybe take control of this presentation. Since he's been working intimately with details around just the design and implementation of it. And also kind of give you a, what we're going to provide somewhat of a layered approach to helping better understand where we are now and where we want to get. And so I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Um, so I have a series of site plans that kind of show a phased approach for how, uh, the exterior sports scope could be implemented at the high school. This is the current, uh, plan. S, the top left-hand corner softball, and then you've got baseball. The bottom or in the middle there on the screen, you see SP that's used for JV softball when they have that and also varsity baseball, JV baseball. I know last year there was not a, I've learned that there was not a JV softball team or only a varsity softball team last year. Um, and then F1 through F5 just indicate the fields that are available for soccer, football, field, field sports, lacrosse. So there's your current conditions. Next slide. This would show phase one, which is, uh, bringing on the new stadium, multi-use field. That would be the F1, again, being turf, synthetic turf, it can be used, which at a much higher rate to grass because just the nature of things synthetic. To the left, you can also see the gray slot, which is the parking lot that is needed to meet city Montgomery zoning code. So if we have 3,170 seats, we need one parking stall for, for, uh, every three people. And that gray with a red outline would accommodate that, plus all the existing parking lot all the way to the west. So, um, you can see softball, baseball would remain. And then out in the, uh, the right, the, the triangular area, you would have three fields. So we would be down a field with this, this nature, this scenario, but you would also have a synthetic field, which I don't, I think it's kind of a, a wash. Uh, the yellow represents the, uh, the grandstand. So you would have the home side on the west, the, the visitor side on the east, and then a student section. And then the little blue, uh, square would represent concession and restrooms for the, for the spectators. Next slide. This would be phase two. So pending fundraising, this would accommodate field houses. There would be a home field house in the north, which would be directly, uh, kind of associated with, uh, a concession and restrooms, the student section in the, in the visitor, home side on the, on the east, the west. On the south side, you see another field house that would be visitor field house. It's basically the locker rooms, concession and restrooms for the, for the visiting spectators. So they would kind of live on the south and east side. And then also, um, as money donations would, we would come in, we would do updates to the current softball, the current baseball field. So before we had plans, when we were relocating baseball, but we, Mr. Harden and I talked, we, we looked at it with the construction manager. About 300,000, maybe even 400,000 dollars savings could be seen if we don't relocate baseball. So, uh, so the next slide.
But in phase two, there's a renovated field or no?
They would be renovated fields. Yes. Yeah. Yep. And then, um, finally, phase three, we would construct that kind of, uh, JV softball freshman baseball field. But we'd do it in a manner, I think Mr. Curio mentioned about how ball sports, baseball and softball are not growing. We would probably have a removable fence and that would allow us to have a two and a half practice fields out in that wedge area. Because I know with camps, you drive by that area all summer, you see different, different sports camps out there. That could still happen also with, with the F1 field. That would be a synthetic turf. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Excuse my sports ignorance for this. Um, so why would we put another softball, baseball field there when we have sports like soccer and lacrosse that are played, I think, to a higher degree than that? Why would we do that?
It's, it's really, you know, we're going, Mr. Harden, he kind of was hedging on saying, do we really need that third field? So that's why we have it in this final phase. So, uh, I'm with you where baseball and softball numbers are not growing. Your field sports, as far as lacrosse, field hockey, those, those are growing. So, um, this is.
That gets out of the baseball player. The baseball program, and you might be able to, yeah, we end up softball here. But the way there are still a varsity JV impression baseball teams. Okay. So there are three teams at the boys level and I expect those to continue on. The way those are, the way that works in terms of how they have their games is that the varsity tends to be the place their games home or away. And then the JV and freshman teams play at the same time at the same field when they have games. So the whole spring, whenever the JV and varsity play at home, they need two fields to be able to have their games played because none of our fields are live. So they have to both play right after school and, um, play at the same time.
And the softball field, the softball field is too small, so opposed to JV.
So that's, yeah. And, and a lot of times girls are playing softball at the same time, the boys are playing baseball on this field. So you really do need to have that third field to be able to accommodate the, the, both varsity, JV, freshman, all three of those teams being able to have, have games at the same time or practice. Or, um, you know, so, so that's why you would need to continue to have those fields. I think what Mr. Janigan is pointing out though, is that, that area to the far right cannot only be that baseball field, but those other fields can also be utilized to support some of those operations.
And where does lacrosse, I'm just, I'm assuming that the old track, that's where the soccer team plays, correct? And that would stay the same? And where would lacrosse play?
And soccer and lacrosse are opposite. Yeah. See.
So lacrosse would, would play on the current, current soccer.
But is there enough with, with varsity and?
We only have two lacrosse teams. So like, uh, you know, I can't say.
And I think their games are shorter so that, you know, the JV plays and the varsity plays, they tend to stack those two teams up. Because they're only an hour long. A varsity baseball team's game can go three hours. Hooray. So the scheduling.
Phase one happens, even if we have those boys and girls lacrosse happening at the same time. One could be at the, I'll say the soccer complex, I don't have a good name for it yet. And we do have the stadium facility set up. It could be at that. So it's an additional opportunity to have that. But I think the biggest thing about the softball, baseball additional field is making sure that it's multiple, multi-use so that it's not. Cause when we were talking about putting a baseball facility out there, it really locks us into, you only have really, if you turf it, you only have that ability to use it, well, you can do that. In this phase or this new phase of just renovating the two fields in the current space and just having a multi-use field out there, it doesn't lock us into, you know, not being able to play either, either sport out there. And again, it would be your, your freshman JV, but it keeps that ability to have that outfield space open for.
Yep. So the, the plan that was presented two weeks ago had varsity baseball in the triangle area. I, I like this approach for a couple of reasons and I'll pay you up for Mrs. Weber's comment. I'll maybe add a couple of dynamics. Um, having that ability to practice on the SB field is really a helpful thing. And it's because it doesn't have a fence, it's not, uh, gritted down. The, I know there's not a JV softball this year, but historically we always, in, in previous seasons, we have had it. There's a transportation element here as well for schools that don't have two fields they can play at once. You do one home, one away. So you're always bussing and then every game, a majority of the GMC has two fields. And so what happens is two softball teams can fit on one bus. And so when you go to a varsity away game, both you, you, you minimize the bussing impact, the transportation cost by having, uh, a field that, and the JV softball could play conceivably on this field without a fence. They do right now. There's no fence on the field. Well, when my daughter played two years ago, they did play with, they don't need the fence like the varsity would. So anyway, I think there's a cost.
The other thing that we, with that third field as well, is that I've spent many days watching community baseball days on that field. So, but both of my boys, that's a, a good field for them to play on when they get to those, you know, when they, they're, they need a full-sized field. And that's been utilized a lot by our community as well.
And, and I, I would suggest that we probably would prefer community and our rec leagues practicing on the practice fields, not on the varsity field. So I think having this SB, I really like this option that's presented here. We do lose one standard size practice field for soccer, lacrosse, band, football, all of them that use that, you know, rectangular practice. But this seems like though, uh, I'm supportive of this, uh, vision. I, I see the benefits of this approach. So.
And then my question would be, cause this went back, some of this company says capacity, losing a field, what does that impact our health programs? Is there still room for everybody to practice when they're, when they need it?
And here's what I guess, when you say losing a field or you talk about losing a baseball field, cause I don't look at adding a stadium as losing a field.
Currently we have five fields, I thought. You're correct. There's one, you're down one. One field, one sports field, not, not all, all that. So to, to me with having, adding another one with lights and it's synthetic, you guys know when you have a synthetic turf field, it gets used a lot because it drains better. There's no mud to contend with. You don't have to shut it down to receive. So to me, I don't have, you know, the exact data from, from the turf folks, but I think it's kind of a wash.
Well, Mr. Level, what I would say is, so there's, there's multiple abilities. It may not be, I think it's, it's functional for the district need for our teams. You know, I have not heard of Mr. Harden that he can be able to accommodate everything that he needs to do on this facility. Where, where, you know, I guess the question comes in is how does the community begin to use the facility? And, you know, in this situation with like soccer and lacrosse and some of those youth groups, youth football, you know, the people that are typically at the high school, you know, the turf field can be used in halves instead of holes. It can actually be turned, it can actually turn sideways and it's, and it's not a full field. But, you know, we have a lot of teams and we're trying to accommodate everybody that we can. But, you know, to actually, if, look at our needs, this accommodates our, thank you.
My question, if you remember at the last board meeting, it was more about, I know how the soccer teams work. There's three on the left side, right? Freshman team or JV team at first. I, I assume football team would be using that turf boot in that fall at the same time. Varsity uses. My question is, it's maybe we haven't heard from Mr. Harden yet, but I, it's really important. This is our opportunity that we don't have to send our teams on a bus to go to somewhere else to practice. I understand the flexibility. I appreciate it. You know, I, I hope that turf component is part of it because that offers that flex. But if, if we can't guarantee that our school teams are practicing logistically what they do in that. Cause what we just pointed out for baseball, it's going for soccer. It's just there's more teams.
Yeah. The, the turf field has a football, uh, layout, marching band would obviously use that. It also has soccer and field hockey lines also within lacrosse, two, two lacrosse. So.
So for me to get behind this plan, I need to hear from Mr. Harden that he can guarantee that we can have all of our school teams being able to practice at the school as they do now.
And I don't have him here, but, yeah, through the discussions, he's been intimately involved in this discussion and believes that this accommodates our.
Well, could we, I mean, I hate to be so restrictive about it, but could we actually put, you know, sticky notes on the field and say this is his practicing at what time? Cause we know the seasons that they play, it shouldn't be that complicated. So I'd hate to have it be like, yeah, everything's going to be fine. And we come, after this is all done and we don't have that situation where our teams are actually practicing on.
It's just that there's been some issues with pressures already with the current configuration. We all understand that we're losing a field. So it's kind of hard to digest the logistics of that.
Uh, I think, I guess my, my comment would be, you know, that's what they're tasked with is they know what the layout is going to be. They know how to make it work logistically. And I, I believe that they know that this is our configuration or that we believe this would be our configuration moving forward. And they had every opportunity to look at their logistics. If you are saying you would like to see that, logistically, I guess I would say you ever look at that now. Cause one of the things that we don't have, and Mr. Janigan quickly brought it up, we constantly close fields. Set our grass because the football team or some of the youth soccer programs have torn them up so bad because of the weather, that we just have to close them and we close them for an entire season. So. And I mean, I'm talking like for a nine-month period. So I, I would say based on what we have here, based on what I've heard from Mr. Harden and our athletic departments, this accommodates our need that does not, we're not going to come back and say, well, we made up this thing. We didn't have enough field space. That's.
Mr. Mr. Lewis, Mr. Harden said he can pipe in and speak to that.
Okay.
He's a little bit busy, but if we can. Mr. Harden, are you on?
Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Sorry, I'm at the hospital here with my, my son. Here, I, I, uh, I can quickly go through, um, a typical fall schedule just to show that not only can we accommodate all of our teams, we can actually get the band, um, out of the parking lot. So if you just look at your basic three to five, five to seven, seven to nine, and I only use seven to nine because the band typically, that's their time they practice on Tuesday and Thursday. You have varsity soccer teams that both practice, both teams currently practice with their varsity and JVs together on a full field. They split the field. So if you take what we'll call the soccer lacrosse field, you would have girls soccer. And these can flip, obviously. Um, but girls would go three to five with their varsity and JVs. The boys would go five to seven. And there's actually an open spot from seven to nine if somebody else wanted to go out there, whether it be an outside group, an off-season group. At the multi, at the multipurpose stadium, football could go three to five. JV B who normally gets stuck on the grass could go five to seven. And the band could move from the parking lot during their normal time on Tuesdays and Thursdays and, um, actually practice on the field where they're going to perform. So we're not really losing, um, a field per se. We're actually adding one that doesn't have to be torn up. It doesn't have to be lined. We don't have to move goals. So actually everybody gains with the new stadium immediately. I will tell you that the most, uh, excited group about this change in this plan with these times is the band. Who we normally, because we only really have one turf space that we, is, is in the grass. It causes our maintenance folks to spend money lining fields and moving fields as they get torn up. As Chad was just speaking about, you know, tho- those fields always move as weather determines to a grassier area. So as far as accommodating our teams, it does, it does more than the, than the old plan. Not the old plan, but it's obviously much more effective, effective than just having grass. Besides all that time and money we spend on moving those fields around as they get torn up. So.
Mr. Harden, this is Mr. Curio. Can we, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I just wanted to know, can you accommodate all of the, all of our school teams from freshman, JV and varsity at the high school facility for their games and scrimmages?
Yes, I, I just explained a typical fall. That, I would tell you that in the spring, the third field does become necessary, um, to accommodate freshman baseball. But our hope with this plan is, um, and, and there's not a huge expense to put a skin and field out there now, which is exactly what we have out there now. It could, it could easily be done for very little cost that would put freshman baseball out there. And if we ever, and, and we will, I agree with what Mr. Commerford said, we will be, be able to bring JV softball back as our numbers come back. And that is a field that can be used because they play alternate schedules. When freshman baseball is away, freshman softball would be home. Uh, they can share the field for practice time and, and no one would have to move.
And then my second question is the new stadium would be, um, available for multi. And then my second question is the new stadium would be, um, available for multi-sport as well, correct?
Yes, like I just said, if, if you just look at a typical week, a typical practice schedule is when no one is competing. Uh, football would go from three to five, JVB soccer would go from five to seven, and the band could go seven to nine, which is their normal time. They usually go six to nine, um, on their Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I have a, there's a, there, there is a big, um, road. A small amount of parking that goes. SB, is that remaining place?
Yeah, you can see with the, the, this is a preliminary grading plan that we did just to explore this. And you can see that the grades maintain that road. Um, so you, and then you can see the detention that would be required kind of right there at Cornell. Um, you've got the one here where your kids fish. When you pull into the high school, then there'd be another one that would be required.
So, so if, and the reason I'm asking is if there were people that were going to be utilizing the F2, F3, F4 SB fields. There would be a small amount of parking.
Yes.
For that.
Yeah, there's currently about eight or 10 buses back there. So there would be parking there for the, the folks parking and drop off for F2 or F4.
Okay.
There's not enough parking back there now.
It's pretty, it's pretty small now, but it could be.
And I, I'm glad that you said that, Mr. Evans, because like, I know that we've been focused on all these facilities and all these athletic. But that parking lot that needs to be included for zoning code and other things.
Fire access.
Also just needed for the high school and also, I'm going to get up. Sorry, I'm a, I'm a visual learner, but.
Just to recall, just to help with traffic flow with this school and the things that we are challenged with. Remember we committed to a road, an access road to be able to come off of Cornell, to get traffic off of Cornell. Snake it into the property, which this is a new road that's not there. This parking is, you know, a part of being able to park some additional students that we currently don't have room for. If you're a new. Sophomore driver, we don't have a parking spot for you right now with construction parking and everything else. And that's the challenge normally because I think those new drivers end up getting a parking spot out here and have to snake across the park property. So. And able to get that snaking process started to separate our bus traffic, which is going to be over here. To allow that new, and if you recall, it's a double loop. It's a double loop, one that's going to come in here and snake back out. The other one is a continual loop coming in here and snaking back out. And that was part of the overall design. So I don't want this parking to just be solely focused as this is only going to help athletics or it's only required for athletics. It's bigger for the overall package of the high school. If we need that additional asphalt.
It can be funded through bond money. Uh, we have some contingencies and, and there's also some monies within the high school that we haven't completed yet. So the answer, in my opinion, is yes. Is that, is that diagram, the next slide? Bill? Yeah. So this is what Mr. Lewis was just referring to. Yep. So one of the things that we did do on the job is the site, uh, traffic impact study with Klajers. So Klajers created these diagrams, which, uh. Resulted in the double drop off. So the conclusion that they've come to in the simulation that they've done, they simulate all the traffic. They, they, you know, they put the rubber things out, they monitor how people travel to and from Sycamore High School. And then they've simulated in the computer is that you're, you would have an orange line and a pink line that would come from the east. So you, your, your east side residents, they would get on the campus, get off Cornell. Um, and, and traffic tends to work slower when you're, when you're driving direct campus of a building. You're not going 35 miles an hour. So it allows a really large amount of stacking space. You can see is what Chad said, the orange snake. So we have an incredible amount of stacking space compared to how people come now, where they kind of just hover by the Gregory Center. Folks from the blue airside, the west side of the, of the district would come from the, the purple and green. Again, a large amount of stacking and we would work with City Montgomery traffic to allow for people to just try to come in. Uh, this has been presented to City Montgomery's traffic engineers and their police department. They, they approve this concept. And so the next slide, the next is the dismissal. I was just going to say, the other thing that the city of Montgomery is talking about doing. Is, you know, they're at least investigating whether or not a roundabout would make sense in this area.
This, is that football field in the same spot?
No, this is, this, this, this was a football plan concept, you know.
I said the same thing when I first saw.
Yeah, this, this was the concept that, that, uh, was a year ago. And this is when the traffic impact was started. So. Disregard the sports components on here. They're same kind of parts. The road is in the same spot. Yes. Yep. So the dismissal, again, it's the same, it's, it's kind of the inverse of, of the arrival. Day one, we may have, but as we communicate how people need to behave and operate, kids and parents will figure it out. Um, and then on the.
Any change putting a roundabout or any change at that level would be the city of Montgomery, not.
City of Montgomery.
Or somebody, it's not our responsibility to have to get that approved.
Yeah, it would be, oftentimes with schools, sometimes it's, it's a, it's a partnership. So, um, where it may be a, a, a joint grant that is applied for, um, within the state of Ohio that maybe Sycamore and. Um, City Montgomery Co. Apply for, and it may say, hey, each of you have to put in a certain amount, the state don't match that. I, I have another district that's occurring. So we have reserved, we have reserved money for.
That's not been the discussion that they have with us, kicking in money or, yeah, I think they just wanted to see if we would be okay with them pursuing it.
And again.
If they pursue it through their avenues of grant dollars and.
Yeah, but I've seen all different methods. So. So anyway, I guess the, the point is that the, a part of this plan is the parking lot and the road. And it's a daily, um, safety issue for arrival dismissal at the high school.
But Mr. Janigan, when you say, when you say it's part of the plan, I need to understand it from what it's, he said, oh yeah, we could take it from the bond money. Tell me what that means. Does that mean we're planning for it in the bond or we're just, what is it part of the contingency? We have $7 million?
So, so to date, I don't have the exact amount in front of me. There's a, there's about. Um, $6.7 million reserve at the high school for a final GMP. It's, it's basically the gymnasium and the locker room. Within that, there's contingencies and there's, there's monies for additional site work improvements. That's what I'm referring to. So, um, we are, we, we are working on those documents now. Our plans have been ready by March. And then HGC Lexi could do the final GMP at the high school. So it's one of those things where it's, there's a lot of moving parts within this program as far as. The sports go, the interior sports go and some of this, these site decisions.
And yeah, I think it's important to remember, you know, we have, you know, we have contingency set up, you know, for the program. But we also had a discussion in March of 2020. And where we use our bond dividends to pay for roofing that was not originally included in this bond. And that was a, a direction we pulled out 2.4 million, paid for roofing projects. Where now we have a parking issue that needs to, in my mind, be funded. At 1.1 billion is it was part of planning of the bond issue. And those were dollars that we could have counted on to pay for, you know, this portion. So. I just think when you look at it in totality, we've got to talk about all the aspects that we, and funding sources that we utilize. You know, the roofing was originally planned to be spent on a capital improvement. So that was a change, you know, that had the board. It was a decision that was made and we moved forward. But, you know, I really think it's something we need to discuss is. Is that, do we want to continue to keep that? And, you know, we may have to make some trims or cuts, other places that were included in this. Or can we pull some of the money back that we said was committed to roofing to fund the park?
That's to make you, just a reminder, what I basically looked at for funding the roof is the approximately $2 million. An investment revenue that we basically found from this project. So it's not, you know, the initial bond issue allocation, it's not capital improvement, but it's dollars that we burn that. Uh, it could make some sense to utilize them for, and, you know, in part potentially. Uh, to reallocate them to help with the parking issue that I think is going to be something that you'll see utilized by. Our student staff and community on a daily basis at that high school. I mean, right now they're already, as of October, there are no additional student spaces available on that site for parking on a daily basis. Um, you know, our, our student population is only going to be growing at the high school right now. I think we have smaller class sizes than what we had for a while. We're starting to see that wave of larger class sizes coming forward. Um, you know, I just, I've lived the high school for the last six years. And there are numerous times you go out there and you cannot find a parking spot, you know, when you have multiple events out there. When you're, you, you know, even on a spring afternoon, once with the current configuration and trying to find a place to park in that, in that area.
I think we're coming up on the worst day for parking, which is the crap show, the Saturday before. Thanks, Gary. And now you have to get on a bus to get to the high school.
Right. I mean, it's, it's, it's a need beyond just for that, for the stadium. It's a, it's a need that we're, I think we're going to continue to see. Uh, to accommodate our, our student drivers. I think it has a lot of, um, benefits. And looking at the, the blow on and off of Cornell Road, which we know is an issue for our communities. Um, so it just feels like it should be something that we potentially look at how we're going to allocate. Those investment dollars, uh, to this as opposed to the, the roofing plan that we're, that we're not included in our actual budget.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, part of the scope, you keep talking about kind of rough numbers. I know every time I add it, my add up includes 240 million kind of projects versus 127. Um, and it's getting to be pretty big and we're still floating around with some of these numbers, are they in the bond or not? And I thought we'd already allotted that out back in May of 2020. Even the bond revenue, you include the bond. That was an extra revenue to go spend to build other stuff. I thought it was offset costs that came within what we were doing. I don't remember we carved that out and said we were going to do other stuff with that additional revenue that came in and proved that. So I'm just, I'm worried that this, you know, the plan is flipping into 145, 158 dollar plan. Especially when we say, well, the roundabout, we might partner with it.
Well, there, there isn't an answer. There's just been.
I know, but it's, your idea is just keep having this thing grow. And then we have the discussion we had today with Mr. Horn. I think the stuff he's doing is absolutely stuff we have to do, but we can make credit off inside the money the community gave us. And we keep spending money outside of this. This is going to be 145 million dollar problem. And that's not what the community grew. The way I think about this one is we made a commitment to the community. If all we spent two and a half million dollars towards athletics and everything else would be privately funded. That's how I understood the agreement. I think the question before us, is this parking lot part of athletics? Or is it part of the high school's improvement? And, and I think you could argue both sides of this. And it really depends on where you would draw the money from. Are we requiring it from the private funding? Or are we trying to carve out space within the bond? And, and you could, I think you could effectively argue. We need this because of the stadium size. And you can say, the high school's always had enough of a parking. I think both are, are to me logical arguments. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think we have to hold to the commitment that our athletics spent. From the bond is at the 2.5 billion, which we agreed when we sold that, um, and added to the community. So we have to, we can include it. But then we have to have the private funding from the athletics, which I don't think we have all of the private funding already completed. And, and we don't know what that number is going to be. So for me is we have to have that, we have to have that in hand before I would spend it. And so I just, just to say that clearly, so that, anyway, I'll just stop there. But that's how I, I look at this. And we also said we were bringing our capex budget down. And I think if you look at the foot of that capex budget, because we keep putting, looking in that, we're not bringing that back down. We're shifting money for construction money, you know, outside of that or maintenance, whatever you want to call it. Uh, and we're growing the capex budget and we're also growing, you know, all the spending. So, I mean, I think the total package is pretty hard to, to go back to where we were when we approved the bond.
I guess my, my only comment about capex, we talked about bringing it down to four. That roofing was back in the plan already. Now it's not.
Except in May 2020, we said we'd put it into the bond and then pull it out again. So we've been going back. It's a lot of money, you know, it's a lot of.
Mr. Janigan, now that parking lot is, I think I read you right. It's designed by the capacity in the stadium. Times three, so three per car. So that parking lot's tied. And we knew we were going to have to park the lot. But the stadium all along, right?
We did, but I would say the original five million did not account, account for parking. It was, if the original five million was strictly bleachers, stadium lights and some support spaces. Um, that, that number came from.
So the odd issue that we presented to the community did not include a parking lot.
I would say the discussions had, did not happen with Montgomery until, until later. But what I was just explaining that there's still so much movement and decisions where the parking lot can be integrated. It, it can be integrated with, with bondage and like, it's just, there's a lot of moving parts within this kind of final GMP and this sports scope. Before we are with the high school.
It's, that would be at the expense of something like renovating the gym, like you're saying.
Exactly. Yeah, the gym, we, we had a scenario where the gym was rotated and it was a very, it was called an arena. We, we, we've studied it. It was very expensive. Mr. Harden has now gone back and said, I think we could just keep our current configuration. That saved a lot of money. What, what we're going to do is we're going to just replace the bleachers, which are very dated and old. And, and do finish work, the floor and the gymnasium is relatively new. Um, so we, we've, we now are at the point where we kind of have a gymnasium version 2.0 compared to what it was. Before he was losing practice spaces, it was really nice. It was a nice arena. It seats all the way around it. But as we studied that and priced it. We found a way to reduce that cost and still have more benefit if some of that savings can go to this parking lot.
And, and we were, we were earmarking bond money for a stadium. I mean, the, the, the arena renovation, that, that doesn't hold. And that was going to be within the two and a half million.
No, 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 no. This is within the high school G, the high school budget for the renovation of the Sycamore High School.
The commitment was only about the stadium. You had dollars already allotted to internal renovation of the stadium.
Interior sports go, yeah. So, is it, Mr. Fritz, is there one more, is there one more slide? So the, I believe this was presented, uh. A couple of weeks ago, the multi-use field, site work, turf, grandstand, stadium lights, scoreboard, restroom concessions. And then, and then just soft costs, contingencies, 5.9 is the current estimate. That was dealt with our HGC and then the parking is an additional 1.1. So that, those were the, the current numbers of what HGC has, this be, it, bidding it out in 22 and integrating it in the year 22.
So let me just point to Mr. Confer's point about the money. What my understanding was, was that we were going to privately fund two and a half million. Two and a half million was coming from the bond. So now we're already 0.9 over on that. And then we're adding 1.1 million. So by those estimations, we basically have to, we actually have to fundraise more money in order to approve this space.
So here's, I guess, my, my reaction to that, we're, we're at 5.5 million. That is, that has been raised without a campaign. So in my mind, we're $400,000 shy of the phase one estimate. And that's pre, pre-bid. We haven't gone out for bid. We don't know the, and again, we made the commitment. Pre-dandemic. So we have to also consider the impact of that. You have 5.5, you say, and it includes the 3 million for the quarter. No, this is just what's there. So two and a half bond. Two and a half private and there's 500,000 additional that have been privately fundraised just for the stadium. So we're 400,000 shy to move forward with phase one. So we're 400,000 shy to move forward with phase one. Pre, before any fundraiser and without any fundraiser, additional fundraisers. The parking expansion, you know, as you've heard from Mr. Danny, it was not, it was not in the consideration as. And I don't, you know, I'm just going to be completely transparent. I don't think people are going to want to fundraise to pay for parking lot. That's my reaction, but you know, I'm open to the dialogue and discussion, but. In my mind, and I, I, I go back to the comment that one of the board members, camera member just said, said so much so far. Is parking really a part of the stadium or is it a bigger use for the entire facility and is there a way to fund it within the bond? So.
But the scope of the parking is contingent on how big the stadium is, right? So I mean, it is.
There's a portion of it. Yeah. And, and as I just mentioned, we, we've adjusted the interior of the gymnasium. You know, it's $600,000 in savings. And then also within the interior is a line of $500,000 of site roadway improvements. So there is 1.1 that we did the GMP for the high school renovation. Could accommodate the parking.
Does the 1.1 include the roadway improvements?
Nothing on Cornell.
Nothing but the access.
The access road and it's the access road in the parking lot, yes.
And so, and I may just make sure, just as a clarification. What the suggestion is, is that we have, will. Reduce what we were planning for the basketball gym in order to. Move those funds to cover for the parking. That's the, in essence, the, while they're not exactly the same.
Yeah, I think, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. The gymnasium renovation roughly was about $2 million at all point. The current layout is about 1.4. So that's, that's 600, that 600 came from, from the interior.
Okay. And you already had earmarked 500 for the, the road, the, the access road, if you will.
It's called, it's called, you know, access road, site safety improvement.
So that's 1.1. And so my question is, this parking expansion of 1.1. Does that also include the cost of the, the roadway? It's parking plus the access to that.
Yeah, that is what Mr. Lewis referred to as the state road.
Yes.
Yes. Everything on, on, all the asphalt work on Sycamore High School property.
And we had estimated 500,000 just for that state.
We, what we did when we were budgeting for the high school, we knew that when. There would be a lot of site work improvements. We lined out a $500,000 for just roadway improvements throughout. And we didn't know if it would go on Cornell Road, or we didn't know if it would be on within the, the high school campus.
And all of the reconfiguration of the parking lot in front of the new main entrance.
That's already been done. That's already in bond.
Separate and not, not considered retro.
It's already been bought, designed. Probably happening, I believe, I believe this summer. So when I see this and I hear the dollars have been fundraised, there's about a $400,000.
And, and if we wanted a more grand basketball arena, that would need to be privately funded.
Correct.
Under this approach, we wouldn't be earmarking any more bond money for basketball. We would have to, if we wanted a, an elevated. Arena.
Yeah.
That would require private funding.
Correct. And, and, you know.
And there's only so much that we can do within the current footprint. I mean, it really is cosmetic companies.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at better scoreboards. You're looking at.
You know, a whole lot that you can do if keeping the current.
Yeah, current footprint is poor concrete walls. So we're, we're locked into that.
And really where we invested a lot of the interior dollars was our locker rooms or churches. That's.
So we, so we don't, that's the only, we have not adjusted whatsoever. Locker rooms are full of gut jobs. A to Z, we're going down spare concrete.
From the way I look at this, it's your $400,000 short.
Correct.
Would you approve that?
So we're roughly $400,000 short before we really start our always ace campaign or start. And what happens if we don't get that for, I mean, I, I certainly think we will.
I'm glad you asked.
But what happens?
Because that's the ask for today is to consider moving forward with the program of phase one. Because there's only one critical decision that we need from you today prior to that fundraising campaign start. Which is the bleachers are a significant item that has to go ahead and be covered. For any chance that it will fall. That's the only item that needs to go forward and that one is covered.
And that cost has been held for us until today. Cost escalation happens tomorrow. We got an exemption from them to be able to keep that quote.
How much is it?
One, uh, do you have it in front of you? It's 1.3. 1.39. Seal costs have gone up, but they were able to lock us in.
That's home, home grandstands, visitor grandstands, students. Material labor.
And the 1.3 is what's in that 5.9, so the current quote.
I got my question back to.
Yeah, I mean, going back to Paul's question. I mean, so the question is, if we say, oh, yeah, hey, go buy the grandstands. If we've already, we have raised that money, right? And have raised enough. But then what if we don't raise the 400,000? Where's that coming from? And then we also have phase two and phase three. I mean.
We would have to make the trends.
Because the challenging part of the board is, is, it's, it's money in all these different pockets. And you say, well, we, you know, we, we allocated to the bond issue this much money to renovate the gym. We're saving money, so we're putting that money toward the parking lot. I mean. But we don't have anything saying that honestly. We don't really have the details of that. And so from, from my perspective, how do I say, oh yes, let's go ahead with phase one. That's fine, even though we're $400,000 short.
And I think the ask for today is that if you're saying that you don't feel comfortable without that information moving forward with phase one. It's moving forward with the bleacher cost. Does, to answer your question, if we don't raise 400,000 or more. We will make the trends to get under 5.5. Because I think this is our, the last statement that I very clear. 5.5 is his voting capacity. If the price comes in above 5.5. I can't support this. And I don't know how the other board members feel, but he made that very clear to me. And I, I understand that. I do believe that.
And I think this would be easier if you said, this is what you get from 5.5. Go.
And I think it's important for me to understand, if we get to 5.5, let's say that, because when I look at those lists. There is a whole lot that I can change. So if one, the item that we get cut. Is 400,000, uh, and we, we would have for our opening game, we would have porta potties and. Probably no concessions, saying this is 400,000.
Or second time a trailer.
Or consent, but that would be when I look at the list, what can I, that's, that, that's steam.
And if we raised 400,000 through the campaign, we could add that back in.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I could, I could get behind that. I can get behind having a debt that I don't know how to cover. I would David on that point. And if, if we, if you could tell me that I can get to 5.5 without restrooms and concessions. And then we'll add that back in after the aviator campaign earns $400,000.
Yeah.
And we have enough lead time. And, and assume, let's just assume for a matter of, for the campaign, we get the $400,000 earned before December 15th. What date, what's, what's my date? Do I need to know that before what date to have it ready? Is it January, March? How long do we have to earn 400,000 to have a viable restroom?
It's, it's tricky right now with, with just all the supply chain issues. So I, I mean, I'd say by January 15th. You know, in order to design it, procure it. Build it.
But we should have a pretty good idea on the capital campaign.
I mean, the only one, if you get rid of the visitor concession, the visitor state, not seats, get the other side. Probably save about that much.
Yeah, this.
We don't have that now, you know, at least in the high school summer.
We could build out the shell of the concession, or we could build the shell of the concession, but not build out the inside and save that 400,000.
That's another modular way. So we could, we could build a building.
You know, the real challenge is, there's kind of plans there to close on where we're at today. That's, that's disappointing. Because I know you guys want to move forward and I understand the reason why. But to what Brad's saying, asking us to go out on a limb on something we don't have, that we promised we would do.
And I, you know, I, I hear you keep saying that and I'm really struggling with it. That commitment was made pre-pandemic before a lot of inflation involved. So I, I struggle.
Everyone's struggling.
And I get that, but I just, I struggled that, you know, we, we raised 5.5 million and. Or have 5.5 million or raised 300, or 3 million privately in it. It's just really a struggle for me to hear that. But we just, we're disappointed too. We don't, we didn't, we don't want to bring this forward. We wish it was under.
But the pocket, we have to pull it out of Mr. Lewis, because that, that affects the education of the students. And I think that was part of the, the part when the bond issue came up is the community was clear if that wasn't included in the bond issue. We didn't have the same level of support. So I, I think, I can get behind a plan that's, that says, here's the 5.5. And the first 400,000 that we would spend is phase one A and that would be putting the restrooms and concessions back in. Once we get the money. But I, I can't say, let's go forward with 5.9 if I only have 5.5 in my, in my bank, right? For this. And, and I don't want to pull the 400 from the part that's for academics or.
Yeah, I don't think we suggest there was money from academics to cover this.
But where does it come from?
Well, I think you just heard our team has committed 400,000 being privately fundraised. I don't know that I, I, so far I haven't heard any of us ask you for 5.9.
So some of the timing.
We needed to provide you the information, which we have. You've provided us direction that 400,000 is non-negotiable. We will put that in our private fundraising campaigns. I believe will well exceed 400,000. So my biggest challenge now at this point is so we have, it sounds like we have this clear direction on. 5.5 is your cap without additional private fundraising dollars. It sounds like we, we will come back to you with a plan for the parking expansion. What we need to learn, and if you're willing to give your approval for phase one A minus the restrooms and concessions. We can move forward with the items we need to move forward with, which is the grandstands being ordered.
I could do that.
Great. Got to work.
So do we need to take any formal action to be able to move forward to phase one A minus restrooms and concessions being added?
With the, with the understanding that that's about, that's about all.
Well, I think.
That is absolutely up to the board. We don't need a formal approval of that.
What we need or kind of verbal of is the purchase of these grandstands and press box.
I, I'd like to take them off phase one A so it's clear.
Two different.
With that evolution. Edition, without additional numbers. Or anything over 5.5. That allows us to. Really appreciate that. Well, I saw this conversation.
And we're hoping, obviously, that competitively did this and get that 5.9 down to 5.5, which would be a home run for everybody. And so we look forward to working with HSP to get through that process and get that going, but committed to the 5.5. We appreciate you all. I keep asking about like, you know, like a Kroger Plus, like a free win. HSP says they don't do that.
Did this Carl maybe get copy of something?
I asked her, I, I could not get the copy of her part. And what I need is the revolution.
So just since we have Charlie and Brad here too. So then how does phase two and phase three of this plan, where is the money coming from that? Is that also all privately funded?
It's all privately funded, 100%.
And do we have an estimate on how much that is?
So I don't know if we've re-broken out all of the scopes of it yet. We have numbers that we generated for each, like. The scope of the whole project originally and then breaking out the field houses. What we need to do is go back with a fine toothed comb and say, what do we actually need in these field houses? Which is what we're working with Mr. Harden on. I mean, obviously you know, we could dream up a lot of really cool things for field houses, but what do we actually need? And what would be most desirable to fundraise against? And so. That's really the process that we're going through now to better understand the, the field houses and then the upgrades to the fields. Which is a recent change in thought. So we're also working with HSG to better, HGC is our HSG, to better understand. What an upgrade would cost.
So just to be clear, so the fund, the private fundraising that was done in honor of, of Mr. Dan Pinky. Is separate, completely separate from the 2.5 million that we raised already, correct?
I'm going to point that line about.
The, the funds that were raised in honor of Dan Pinky, that, those were separate than the 2.5 that you're citing that you're putting here.
Correct.
For this one.
Who are to be utilized for the baseball.
And that's why, so I do want to be clear, for our November 18th, always an aviator fundraiser event. We're hoping to have all these numbers absolutely clarified and have visuals present so people truly know what they're raising against. Yep, yep.
Okay, so the resolution, we agree, I recommend it's able to proceed with phase one of the athletic stadium, one A. Sorry, of the athletic stadium project to cap of up to 5.5 million dollars. That satisfied? Okay, so I need a motion. This is whether it's called a roll.
Read that again.
Yes. I recommend approval to proceed with phase one A of the athletic stadium project to a cap of up to 5.5 million dollars.
Multi-use stadium. Or Sycamore Stadium.
I recommend approval to proceed with phase one A of the multi-use stadium project to a cap of up to 5.5 million dollars. That was Paul and then David, correct?
I just want to make sure that it's not taken in that said, you're very comfortable if we privately fundraise above, beyond 5.5. That we can spend additional dollars for the stadium, field houses, other fortune, as long as it's there. Dedicated to your.
And I think what we would do, which is, as fast to finish that. For somebody who not very, through the first topic of the board, is authorize. Be able to be. Mr. Allen.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Materia.
Hi.
Mr. Price.
Hi.
And Mr. Paul.
Hi.
Motion passes. And then do we also, would you also like the motion about this particular purchase of the grandstand bleachers? Okay. This is for the, I need a motion for the approval of the purchase for the dance, like the Sycamore High School athletic facility and slash press box. I recommend approval of the purchase of home stadium, grandstand, press box, student slash van grandstand. And either grandstand features for the high school athletic stadium project. Call that front stand plate. This purchase is authorized per stage from pricing agreement number 091719-GCT. In the amount of 1,323,889 dollars funded with bond issues, issued funds.
So. Second.
Brad, Colin and Brad.
The one, the one comment I'll make, just that's, as we start, I saw that it said funded with, funded with bond issue funds. As we have future purchases towards this project to make sure that. We update you not only on how much has been earmarked from bond issue, but then all using the only aviator funds. So that we know each side of your voting, combination of the part.
Okay.
And that's why, why do we say this is one?
Thinking that's part of the additional 2.5 million. I guess I think about them as the entire project. Uh, as Mr. Lewis noted, if we want to start delineating what, what is from private funding versus what from bond issue funding. We still haven't utilized the entire two and a half million yet. From the bond, from the bond campaign that was earmarked for the multi-use stadium. So I think it's okay if we want to change that to.
Going to say that last time.
Funds allocated either through the bond issue or private funding to the multi-use. Funds allocated either through the bond issue or private funding to the multi use stadium.
Okay. So, um, I need a motion to amend the motion that we just. Boy, I really liked the task today, but, um, to adjust the last sentence that says funded with bond issue funds to read funded with bond issue funds or privately, privately raised funds. That, sorry.
Private funding.
Impressed funding.
Yep. So.
Oh. Mr. Conover.
I would with bond issue funds, I think needs to have the limit or of not to exceed. I mean. The amount. We always said it not to, I know the number, but if we really want to be clear on this is the aggregate spent on, on athletic facilities, including this purchase shall not exceed two and a half million dollars is I think the intent that we're, we're after on this. I'm fine without this whole clause in here, to be honest with you, but if we want something in there. I don't want it to be unclear if someone's reading the minutes that the bond issue is paying for this and we don't have clarity on the limit.
Okay. So let's, um.
What do you want to add?
So would it say funded with bond issue or privately raised funds, including this purchase not to exceed? You want the whole amount?
Two point five.
Two point five million.
Yeah. In aggregate, which will not exceed two point five million spending.
In private, in bond funds.
In bond funds.
Okay. Do you want me to read that again?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm not sure what number we're on here. So this is going to be the new, so we're going to uh, scrap the last three motions and second that were made. And this is going to be the resolution. So I need a motion to approve the purchase of Dan Clayton for Sycamore High School Athletic Facility Grandstand slash Press Box. Recommend approval of the purchase of home stadium, grandstand, press box, student band, grandstand, and visitor grandstand features for the high school athletic stadium project from Dan Clayton. This purchase is authorized per state term pricing agreement number zero nine one seven one nine dash D C T in the amount of one million three hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine. Funded with bond issues or privately raised funds, including this purchase not to exceed an aggregate that will not exceed two point five million of bond issue funds.
To that, this was, we're first going to vote on the amendment. Make it that, and I believe Mr. O'Hara made a motion to amend it. Mr. Ballen does it in it. So we will have that and we'll.
Okay. So the adjustment to the amendment, that's what we're going to vote on now. This is what is helpful.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Materia.
Hi.
Mrs. White.
Hi.
And Mr. Colm.
Hi.
Now we do, we need another, now we need a motion to actually approve.
I think we can go back and, and go from the initial motion, which is Mr. Ballen and Mr. Colm. Well, now we would, hey, you would agree to the amendment, which just voted it not way. So we'll go back and have a vote on the amended motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mr.
You're good.
You're good.
Okay. So we're going, now we are voting on the agreement to the amended motion.
Correct.
Is everyone clear?
Yes.
If not, thank you very much. Okay. And so going back, Mrs. Silver, that was Mr. Ballen, that Mr. Colm, so people's call the role.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Colm.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Materia.
Hi.
And Mrs. White.
Hi. Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Danigan.
Thank you.
Mr. Level.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
All right. Have a good day. Thank you all. And telling it, please, it's Mr. Lewis moving on to the school calendar.
So I'll try to make this, you know, the nice thing is this is the initial, the presentation and discussion about the school calendar. Definitely want your feedback and then certainly we will gather some additional feedback from parents and, and other constituents of the district. So I apologize for all the corrections. School calendars are always difficult and when we're dealing with all the things we're dealing with with school construction and, uh, just trying to make sure that we're trying to do our best to accommodate all of our students. It really gets tricky. So a couple of high level points and then, you know, Mrs. Tompkins, Mrs. Lovell, Mrs. Wamir, have all been heavily involved in the development of this calendar. And so don't hesitate to jump in if there's things that, uh, we have not covered, but. So there are three options and it all centered around what we call the second modified Sycamore Community Schools calendar. So option one. And I'll just highlight some of the things that are different. All three calendars, the junior high and the high school students would start earlier than the remainder of our district. And here's why. We originally started looking at just high school students. Problem is we share staff between the high school and the junior high. So it made it a little more critical to have, uh, the ability for us junior high and high school students to start at the same time. So you can see the normal workdays, professional development day or professional learning day. And then we go into our, our school days. First day for junior high and high school students came on August eighteenth. You'll notice that the next week we would have our K six teachers, they would participate in those workdays and professional development days. They would be off the next week because we would not have students at the K six level. We would have them report on August twenty ninth and, and begin their work. Uh, the first day for students in preschool would be September first and then the readiness assessment. And then we would end up having our first day for K to six right after Labor Day, as we've discussed. And obviously the main driver behind that is the E H needs construction and teardown of the building. Then you move forward and overall relatively the first option is a normal, what I would consider a normal school year. Couple of highlights, October, you'll see a fall break backed up to a teacher records day. It's something that we've heard is a need. Things that I would say that I don't love about this calendar that fall break would be, you know, less than a little over a month after school starts for K to sixteen. So not in love with that, with option one. Uh, you see the, the recess, uh, in November, the winter break. And then you have one day off in January, coming back on the third after a few years. Typical spring break, all the typical days off due to, you know, either teacher workdays or records day. And then uniquely, you'll see at the end of the calendar, uh, that we would have our staff reporting for a couple of extra days, but the last school would be consistent in ending, uh, all of the students at the same time. And what that would mean is it would, it would cause a, uh, reduction in days for our K six students based on a normal year. So I wanted to highlight that. Can you tell us what a normal year is, Dave?
Yeah. Do we have any historical information about how many days our, our students are last for the last couple of years? It's probably about a hundred and seventy-five. So they're all, they're both, both groups of students are seeing a different, I mean, I'm concerned about that case that some of the live days.
Yep. And absolutely. And we discussed that in our team is that, you know, I think that would be a significant, uh, reduction in days. So let's go to option two with that in mind. Option two, relatively similar start. Still with the K six teachers having an additional week off after beginning. You will see in October, the fall break is gone. It was moved to the week of Thanksgiving, uh, so put in front of Thanksgiving, which for K six students would seem a more natural time to have that production. You'll notice to gain some days that we removed the, a couple of days, the week of, uh, summer nineteenth and put them in January, an additional day in January to come back on January fourth. Moving into the rest of the calendar, roughly the same things. Still roughly the same ending. And again, you can see at the bottom of the chart, the number of days that it would impact. So I, I do believe we still have some, some work to do on some of those, as you talked about instructional days for junior high, high school are relatively the same. Uh, the, the K six would be a, a reduction again, due to the calendar and the need for construction. And then you can see the teaching staff days as well. Option three, the biggest difference is just looking down at the end of the school year instead of ending on June. Into June, uh, with our last day of school being May twenty-sixth, which, you know, one of the things we could do to increase student days is to move that last day further into the year. But on option three, it means that, uh, we would move and could move the last day of school for students further into the calendar. And I think that's where our, in my mind, our gap is in these calendars is to look at how can we add instructional days back to not have such a disruption to our students. But overall, I think you can see the need of, we have to figure out a way to cause our school year to begin later for our E H green students. For our junior high and high school students, this will accommodate us because we need our junior high students to end earlier. Next school year. Uh, for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, it might be different for junior high students when they start, but we're still working through that process to understand all of that. A couple of challenge points, uh, the high school cafeteria has become an issue. It's something we're working through with our construction team. You know, I think Mr. Lovell and a few of his teammates got a surprise at a meeting when one of the contractors said, we need that cafeteria and kitchen area May first to make this work. And Mr. Lovell probably fell on the floor and Mr. Dur.
Mr. I had a question for Mr. Brad.
Probably needs to use it at that point because that was the first time that that had been communicated to us. Honestly, we can't hand over our cafeteria and kitchen in the middle of a school year. It's just not possible. So they're gonna have to figure a different solution, but. So I, you know, these are draft calendars. These are things that obviously we're still, you know, looking at and working on and, you know, I, I already heard an initial reaction, which I already told the team. A reduction in school days is not going to be well received by the community and not going to be well received by the school board. But I won't speak for you. I'll let you chime in here and, and certainly give us some feedback on what we would like to see changed coming forward to a second reading of these calendars and a second presentation, leading to a December, uh, approval and going.
Which of these three calendars are you recommending?
They're open for discussion. Uh, I will tell you that I am not in favor of option number one, the very first calendar. I would say somewhere between two and three, you know, probably leaning more towards two, Mr. Colm, with additional student days added back.
So student days are the one, one certainty. You're calling two weeks from K through six. That, that's a big concern to me. You know, at, at our retreat, you can also talk about the need for administration and our teachers to spend additional time. And I don't see that on any calendars. So that, you know, that, that would be a question back to you.
And it's going to be very difficult in the midst of instruction to try to find additional days without fully kids late into June to see that. So that is, that's a challenge point for us, um, to be able to do that. As you know, we're, we're capped with the number of days that we can have teacher for.
And then I guess my third comment would be, you know, we've heard from several community members about Jewish holidays. Again, that's taken away from the academic things was during consideration in this calendar term.
So we have talked about that and looked at that and I've gotten some historic perspective on that because, you know, we're, I mean, we're, we're a very diverse district. So you know, where do we draw the line at, you know, accommodating particular holidays for different groups of individuals? Because there are multiple holidays where people feel, you know, they need to take off to obviously some good reason to observe their religious holidays, but we, we would not be able to accommodate having students off for every holiday that people have to take off. So it's a challenge. It's certainly a challenge point, but it's certainly something we can go back and look at is how does that flow with some of our other needs and see if that's something we could look at. To try to accommodate all the different holidays.
I do want to call out, um, while not embedded within the calendar year, if you notice up in August of both of the options, two and three, you'll see the twenty ninth, thirtieth, the thirty first of August and the first and second of June, or I'm sorry, the first and second of September are actually teacher days because we need to meet their one eighty-five. That's how we were able to do that. So there's combined P V time for the entire Sycamore K twelve staff, the fifteenth and the sixteenth. Um, and then when you go down, they have off a week. And then they come back a week ahead of their first student day that will have with their staff to do trace.
Is there any contact negotiations with that or do you have to clear with having a report and then offer a week and then back?
Not for the number of workdays. We can require the work of one hundred eighty-five days. We do solicit and will solicit additional feedback. There's been some additional initial discussions with S C A about the calendar. We will sit down until we go over some of the challenges and see if, again, problem solving and good ideas go from multiple fronts. And there may be other ideas we're not thinking of because again, this is our team's first run at creating a calendar. Kelly had not participated in that process. Becky may have participated somewhere else and Brad's just looking at, please help me with construction. So.
August fifteenth, that's when you have access to the building. Derek, are we on, yeah, you could start.
That's where we have access to the buildings that are not essentially being demolished. There was, what we looked at, you know, when, when you talk about getting access to the building and making sure that we're, please, that was the earliest that we felt that we could start at the high school. Because again, there are going to be a major renovation in the interior. Junior high, not a major impact here because they're still working behind the building and it's still got another year of construction. Green with everything needing to be torn down, obviously a pinch point. The other four elementary is not, but what we heard loud and clear from some of the community groups is that, you know, we don't want our youngest learners on different schedules, especially many people have kids throughout the system.
So what are you pushing the professional account days early or not?
You go off site. And then from that and start teaching.
Yeah. That's always a solution. Yeah.
Well, and also that, Mr. Level, to your point, the, the K through six teachers are still six days shy of their contract obligation on this, on these, I'm not, if I'm reading that correctly, right? Even with coming back on the twenty ninth, uh, coming back on the twenty ninth of August.
Was that number updated? It's Tom.
I, I, that's, I.
Wait, let's double check that that number because we believe that this fit the one eighty-five. Terms. We'll double check that for you.
Because the high school and junior high is still, is still shorter day under contract obligation.
But I like the idea of the ones that have the pitch points potentially finding additional space for them.
Yeah, absolutely. And the one thing I do like about this calendar, just from a construction standpoint, especially with the E H green, is having those two weeks after the start of the high school. Even though we've indicated that week the teachers would be off, then they come back. If we need the flexibility with that one building, we could work with that team to understand what those days off actually look like. For instance, they might be able to get into their own spaces that first week. So would it make more sense for them to be in then versus that second week? So we can play with that. It just gives us some breathing room there, which is what we desire to get to that September sixth start date.
With this, this academic.
For the high school, yes. For, um, K six specifically, green, no.
Have a chance they can fish a couple of weeks early, I think.
There's always a chance. You know, you know, we are getting our November eleventh or twelfth, our roofings slated to come in. Um, and they don't see any, I think that was on the core call. So Jerry said that with confidence and if Jerry's saying things with confidence, I feel confident. So we're hitting a lot of the benchmarks. Uh, again, I think the biggest risk with green is going to be demolition of the old building. And that's where we just don't know. At this point, that's the risk that we're seeing, just like the junior high. So, I mean, but here, here, I guess that is a thing, right? Like if we are looking at this and we're getting closer and we're starting to see that we're hitting these targets and things. that we're hitting these targets and things are clearing up, you know, right? It, it, does the board say, well, let's make a last minute adjustment, or do we just write it out?
It's gonna be easier to postpone the opening of school than it is to be done.
Move it on, right? You've got vacations and everything, so. Yeah, it, it's, this has been an exercise, I will tell you.
I do like that idea, but if you postpone it a week, then you gotta postpone the back end, and people are gonna make plans on the back end soon.
You still need to back end the days while that changes, just like what aside days are for.
I know, I, I can't approve first on a calendar that cuts four K days out of. I frankly, that's a sticking.
All right, so.
Well, I just want to say, I think we want, sure you explored it, but maybe you can push a little bit more to see if twenty-second is an option. Because that would solve, solve problems.
Yeah, I mean, and we have these, we could push, but I, I, we wouldn't be bringing this to you if we thought they were gonna be able to make it two weeks earlier. I mean, beyond the, all the stresses of, you know, material shortages, supply chain issues, you just, I don't think we've experienced as much staffing issues just yet, but we're doing everything we can.
I remember being supplied the material issue and.
Right, I think I'm hearing now that, you know, actually that might be checking okay. So what are the obstacles that make this so rigid? Well, the obstacle is not finishing it, it's tearing it down and actually having site circulation figured before, because their anticipation is still finishing green in July.
Yeah.
But you still have to demolish it, and we'll still be in demolition and some of that work all the way through November, but.
Exactly.
I think to get in a position where they can actually open the building, they need any additional days that we can give them. I think they were pretty open that it could not be around the normal start of our year, but we can certainly go back and revisit that and have another conversation, but.
Yeah, our weekly meetings, I mean, it's number one thing that starts out, where are we at on our schedule? Are we still? The, the big thing with supply chain that we found specifically at Sims is that the building itself was ready to go, the crews, the material, all that stuff. It was the finishing, so it was the casework, it was the student desk, the furniture. Furniture is brutal right now, but one of the things that we are doing, just so you all know, is we're having real conversations about what old furniture can we bring over? We are not getting rid of any furniture. I've made that mandate, we are not getting rid of any furniture until we know our new furniture has arrived, because I think there'll be a gut inclination of just forget new stuff. And so that will help us with Green. You know, when we opened up the new rooms at Sims, we needed new furniture. We didn't have existing furniture going in those spaces, so we're watching that specifically, but again, that, that's the biggest probably supply chain issue we're gonna be seeing.
Yeah, I think to Mr. McCreary's point, if we can identify those particular things that we're going to need by what time to know if we can maybe push the schedule a little bit, that would be helpful.
I can understand construction company always wanting to ask for more things. You know, but there might be a little bit of a pushback because we're an educational institution.
But I can, I, I can also, from a parent's standpoint, I don't know where to go much before we're beginning of the summer without setting a calendar in the next four years. I don't see that we can.
We'd be the calendar, it's just.
We'll have another discussion.
Another option.
This was good feedback, this was helpful. I, honestly, I, I kind of pictured what you would say and had it in my head, I already told the team when we were sitting down that this wasn't gonna go well for us. Not, you guys didn't do anything to, you know, attacking us over the top, but I knew what the feedback would be, is gain as many instructional days as possible.
Right, I mean, just, yeah.
And that's been a hallmark of what our team has said.
That's why we're here.
And we. Did you get in squeezing the, the Christmas holiday?
We have looked at squeezing breaks and, you know, we look at.
It's a two week break, and all of them, it's a two week break instead of a one week break.
Feedback we got from community was, if that's not what we're seeking out, if that's something you want us to take a stab at as an option to show what we can do, we can do that.
The other thing I want to throw out that I think is important to note is not only did we want to try to capitalize on the days which you could see, like option one wasn't what we, what we desired, but the other thing was is, we wanted to make sure there was a consistent schedule K twelve through the year. So while one schedule increases days K six, what we didn't want was some students going on this day, other students going on this day, meaning really the only way you can manage those days within the calendar or through the professional development days. If we wanted to give more academic K, K six time, we could create a schedule that K six had a whole different schedule than K twelve, but that just doesn't work for families, for childcare, for any.
No, I agree with that. I, I, I wouldn't want to be to do that as a parent. I do like Mr. Evans' idea, I mean, could you get two more days on the nineteenth and twentieth of the summer and still have a week and a half in Green? That's not harder. We have a week and a half.
And we would have, we have it this year.
Like January second, third would be school days.
Obviously, two to three already have Friday, Friday, we're at twenty-third, Tuesday, and the second be holiday. We'll pick up in three days, we just hope we keep a break to get right to the holiday system.
Okay, well, we have, I think, if you guys, after you guys spent some more time with these.
Yeah.
And if, yeah, if you guys want to reach out to, or whatever, we can tell you what we think, there's a lot of time, and we still have some time, but we're not gonna vote on that until the December end meeting. Mrs. Weber, I know that we have somebody waiting for us in executive session, because it's hard stop at ten thirty, is that correct? So I would like to go into executive session now and then we'll come back to complete the rest of our public session meeting, if that's okay with everyone, so I need a motion.
Probably just need to make some decisions to confer with legal counsel, so all we have.
Yeah. I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with O R C one two one dot two two three to confer with an attorney for the court conservator's fees involving the board that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
So.
Mrs. Weber, please call them all.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. McCreary.
Hi.
Mrs. White.
Hi.
And Mr. Culliver.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes, or executive session passes. We're gonna be going to executive session, we will be back into public session and whatnot. A portion of our executive session is over, so I anticipate ten thirty, maybe ten forty at the latest. So thank you, everyone who's online, please join us back at ten forty, thank you.